Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regularly scheduled zoning Board of Appeals meeting, Plymouth, Massachusetts on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Our last meeting of twenty-four. The case number is case one forty-two. I will ask the court to review the little letter.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Case number forty-one forty-two. The Plymouth Zoning Board of Appeals on the zoning bylaw with the public hearing in the Gray Hall, Town Hall, Twenty-sixth Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. on Monday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. At seven P.M. to hear the petition of Landers Farm LLC requesting a special permit required for section two oh five eighteen F to conduct birth removal on access to ten cubic yards on the property of Landers Farm Way, showing this lot thirty-three-two and thirty-three-three on flat sixteen-one of the assessors in Massachusetts, January first, twenty-four, in the R.R. zone. The petitioner or his or her representative and any other person desired to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated.
Your seats. Seated on this podium is the Supreme District Attorney, Colin Lloyd, Lieutenant General. And you can present your hand myself. Who would be presenting?
The common representative, please, Mr. Chairman.
And so, for the record, Rob D'Ambroso, attorney here at Plymouth, at D'Ambroso Law, on behalf of Landers Farm LLC. Mr. Stick Landers is here with me. I've also got our civil engineer, Bill Madden, GAF Engineering, with me. I'd like to give a high-level summary of what the project proposal is and why we're here for a special permit. I do have a report of Mr. Madden to give us some more color than that's bolt of the site work itself, if I may.
So, again, as Mr. Maine pointed out, we're here seeking a special permit, a special services directive to seek a special permit for earth removal and access to ten cubic yards. So, the special permit is for the amount of earth being removed, not for the use. The use is agriculture, which is a byright use. We're in the rural residential zoning district in the R.R. district. So, there's two byright uses, primarily residential and agriculture. So, the use is permitted here, and in fact, this use on this site has existed for over a hundred years. So, this is long, long before any of us has been used as, it's been agriculture, it's been continuously agriculture for a hundred years. So, there are many logs on this site. Mr. Landers acquired the site twenty-some-odd years ago, and he's seeking to rehabilitate, improve the logs, and expand what's there. So, this board is probably aware of the audience. In order to maximize your yield and production, the logs need to be of certain shape, certain varieties need to be planted, and if you're a fresher, we saw particularly higher-yielding varietals, and Mr. Madden will touch on that, and they need certainly plentiful water. In twenty-seventeen, Mr. Landers took one step toward modernizing the park, improved four-and-a-half acres of the existing seventeen acres of logs, which are called best management practices, the better varietals, the better soil stratification, retain water, and the amount of chemicals that need to be applied to the site. So, this is a continuation of that project, and again, Mr. Madden will touch upon, this was all envisioned since roughly two thousand and five, one of so-called master plans on this site, and adjacent sites were presented to this very board. So, again, what do we have here? We've got seventeen existing acres. Proposal is to develop nine additional acres of working cranberry logs and a six-acre tailwater recovery pond. Again, it's important to note that this site happens to be removed from residential neighborhood. There's no house within five hundred feet of the proposed minimum, at least five hundred feet. And I think the only other introductory remark that I will make, by the way, is a hundred-and-thirty acre site, which I'm sure you saw on the trail, it's a very long city. The only other introductory remark, and maybe we just today received a final memorandum from a peer review consultant, environmental partners. It's dense, we haven't had a chance to work through it, and certainly not a chance to make any changes to the plan, to submit any supplemental material to address the validity of proposals, suggestions within a law. So, my suggestion to this board, unless it's satisfied with the project as is, and again, typically I think the board does embrace at least some of your review consultant's recommendations, my suggestion would be that you'd like to come back and take another crack at this, you'd like to some of these comments, most of it is just to adjust them and apply them. So, I ask the board, if you're not able to dispose toward this project, to give us latitude to come back with an improved project embracing some of these suggestions, for instance, raising the elevation of that irrigation pond that would allow to gradually feed the logs for irrigation purposes and reduce the amount of earth removed by about four hundred thousand yards. Again, that's the estimate that your peer review consultant provided. So, just wanted to offer that caveat out before Mr. Madden makes his presentation. And if I may, I'd like to yield to Mr. Madden.
Good evening, members of the board. Been a long time since seeing all together in the same place. And I'm here on the property of Landers Farm, Skip. As you know, we worked on Jimmy Anderson's property for a number of years, so it's just to the south of Landers Farm. The locusts plan that's shown in the cover sheet here indicates the logs that were created down on Jimmy Anderson's property. That project, as you might recall, you know, it did go on for around, for a little while, did get constructed as intended, things were built the way they were planned to be built, couple modifications here and there, but all in all, when the job was completed, it was what was, what was anticipated. I don't know if you fully recall the situation that we presented back, and I think it was two thousand and five, it might have been two thousand, it's a long time, we have a tough time remembering the dates. But we were charged with putting together an overall master plan. We did indicate at the time, we came for our initial permits, that at some point in the future, Skip would be looking to do some work on Landers Farm, the acres that we purchased up, the mountain hill logs, so-called mountain hill logs. So, at that time, we prepared just a conceptual overview plan that indicated what we're going to do on Anderson's logs and what could occur on Skip's, on Landers Farm. So, Landers Farm, we showed modifications to existing logs, creation of additional cranberry bog acres, and the addition of a general pond slash irrigation pond, and that was all done to accommodate the additional acres, acres that we're intending to put in. I think at that time, we probably were looking at a little more than what we ended up with. Right now, we're looking at just a small amount, over nine acres. I want to say back then, might have been eighteen acres or so. But in the same vein of the concept, the development of the cranberry acres altogether in one area, I mean, that's essentially what that master plan did in the project that we're presenting before you, is an elaboration on the conceptual master plan in conjunction with Jimmy Anderson's property. I know that when we reviewed a, reviewed the report by the planning board, I'm sure you credit, there's a number of, there's a number of things in there. They refer to a number of cases. More than half of those cases pertain to the Anderson property, they don't pertain to Landers Farm properties. So, I just wanted to make that, make that point. I understand that there was some, just one of the comments that was made, there was a cranberry bog that was never constructed, that was turned to solar. That's just not an accurate statement. That cranberry bog was constructed. There's images, there's a picture right in front of you that shows the planted acres there and what happened. So, it was a cranberry bog, it did get built, it wasn't any, wasn't any intention to come, to come before the board with a, with a different project. The project that we're proposing was a cranberry bog for Anderson, is a cranberry bog for Landers Farm. As Rob did indicate, these bogs are a hundred-year-old, a hundred-years-old or more. The latest information that we've been able to put our, put our hands on, show some, some activities there in nineteen thirty-three, that's published information from the eighteen-eight-seven survey. So, you know, these are the truly the old-style cranberry logs, they're cattle logs, they're set well above the water table, they're a little more difficult to manage than our traditionally, our newly constructed acres that we build nowadays. But we're able to at least follow the same protocol with the design, we're able to do it, do a, do a design that incorporates all of our best management practices for cranberry log construction that have been put forth by the Cape Pride Cranberry Growers Association and the UMass Cranberry Experiment Station. And the experiment station is, is a place that's full of, there are scientists and Ph.D.s, that's what they do, they study cranberries, they study the environment, they study the effects of growing cranberries, whether it be fertilizer, herbicides, they, they talk it, they talk about varieties, different varieties that are just better, highly yielding. And that's one of the things that's really the driving force behind a Landers Farm, is that a hundred-year-old cranberry logs. It's not only, they're not only a hundred years old, the vines are a hundred years old. Those vines have been producing cranberries since the day that they were placed in service, with the exception of the renovation that we did for Skip in two thousand and seventeen. So, we did do a renovation up there in two thousand and seventeen, seeing pretty good results of that, of that renovation. So, he asked us to put forth an improvement plan for his farm, and that's really what our project is, is a, is a farm improvement project. It does involve earth removal in order to be up there, to get to where we want to be fire-wise. And as Rob stated, it's a, the site's roughly a hundred and twenty-nine acres in size. The total project will affect about seventy, about seventy acres in, in total. The cranberry bog acres that we're looking to add is really just a little over, a little over nine acres with a, with an irrigation pond, a tailwater pond that's about six acres in size. The six acres in size is what's required to adequately manage water on, on that site. Currently, the water is managed through two six-inch wells. They have some yield restrictions associated with the wells, but you know, following some of the discussion that was put forth by the planning board, by the review consultant, there was some discussion as to whether we wanted to flow the water onto the logs by gravity, pump the water onto the logs, you know, whatever the case was. In this case, we were choosing to manage the drainage by gravity. We felt that, you know, drainage is usually one of the biggest problems with new acreage. In property drain logs, logs that don't drain well, they have a few more problems than very well-drained logs, whether it's a fungus, a herbicide, keeping quality of the berries, things of that nature, just overall health of the crop, intrusion of weed species is another one that you see more on upland bog that's lacking water than you do on a wetland bog that would typically kill off all that unwanted upland vegetation that finds its way in there during the, during the seasons of year that are more appropriate for it. So, that's where we, that's where we have started on this project. So, it did involve digging down to, to get to the water table. We wanted to use the larger source of water than what we have, only because the limitations for wells, they just don't have a tremendous amount of yield. And when we pumped the, put the site from seventeen acres to twenty-six acres, consequently there'll be a little bit more need for water. And you know, particularly if we manage the crop a little bit differently and we change the variety that's, that's planted up there, if we move from the blacks in the house, the early blacks in the house that are up there, and go to a more robust variety that has a much higher yield, something that yields cranberries in the three or four hundred barrel per acre range, we would like to have the ability to provide the water as needed to cultivate that crop for the ultimate, for its ultimate yield. And predominantly, the water, the water that's needed, you know, through the summertime, it might not be as, as difficult as it, as, as to deal with during winter months in, in putting, say, the winter flow on the logs. It's required to put all those underwater, the twenty-six acres, in a very short period of time. Wells just can't, can't deliver the water in a short period of time, hence the reason to construct a water supply reservoir as, as we have on this particular site. You might recall from other projects that are presented in the past to this board, the best management practices that are employed with the construction are, are just that, they aren't the best management practices. Not everybody who builds a cranberry bog in this state today follows all those practices. Landers Farm tends to, many of our clients intend to follow those best management practices. And those best management practices put a lot of, put a lot of emphasis on water control and how you, how that water is treated, how that water is consumed. Think of irrigation water on the, on a cranberry, on a cranberry bog. It's not as simple as watering your lawn and only keeping it healing green, there's a little bit, there's a little bit more, there's a little bit more to it in that regard. So, in any event, we prepared the plans, we submitted those to the town back in October. We had a hearing with the, or meeting rather, with the Cedarville Scaring Committee. We also had the meeting a couple of weeks ago with the, with the planning board, they provided a recommendation to, to the zoning board on, on things. We are also looking to phase the project. We call it, we show it as three phases, and we have broken them up into areas that are larger than what's required under the bylaw. So, you know, five acres is the limitation within the bylaw. It's very difficult to work with heavy equipment, with slopes and excavations and things of that nature, in, in a small footprint. You might recall that at Anderson's site, we, we asked for, I think, a little relief on the acreage requirement, we received it. We've also asked some relief on acreage, and a couple of other projects, and received those waivers as well. Granted, each site speaks directly for itself, each has its own characteristics and rationale behind decision-making, is solely based upon the issues of the particular site. As Rob pointed out, the underlying zoning district, before we can even come forth for an earth removal permit, we have had a loud use in the underlying zoning district, the residential agricultural district, it's our rural residential district, and agriculture is allowed within that zoning district, and that's what we're proposing, is an agricultural end use at that site, as exists today. Water supply, that we're talking about, is the creation of that six-acre, six-acre cranberry bog. We were proposing to bring that down to the water table. It's been suggested that we, we modify that plan and use the wells to fill and upgrade the bog and modify the manner in which we want to handle water, develop the water supply and handle it. We hadn't done that at this point, we selected what we thought would be the best choice for the site. On the existing site, the existing cranberry bog acreage, all the water is registered to the Mass Water Management Act permit, so we're fully compliant with the Mass DDP did water management with respect to the cranberry cultivation and what happened. On our site here, we're looking to take the seventeen point two acres and bring them to twenty-six point four with that, with that reservoir. It does involve earth removal, the earth removal is just a little over two million yards. That's what's proposed to, to bring this site down to, down to a reasonable grade for the construction integration of the new acres with the existing managers. As far as like topsoil on the site, all of our topsoil would be retained on site, used for slope stabilization, none of that is projected to be removed as part of the earth removal project. We would be leaving the, the topsoil on site, we would be using the subsoil and anything that overlays the top of the parent material as, as bog, dipro material or slope stabilization term, that's what the intention would be here. As far as the site grading with the topography, as you know, there's steep topography all over that, all throughout that area. I mean, it's called mountain hill for a reason, and I think that the high elevation coupled with the peaks and the valleys of the topography that exists on that site leads to a fair amount of excavation. We're required under the bylaw to slope our upper adjacent grades at, at three to one to thirty-three percent. That's shallower slopes than some of the existing slopes that currently exist on the site, but nevertheless, that three to one would be a, a uniform slope that's easily managed and easily stabilized. And I think if you wanted to reflect back onto the Anderson property, you might recall twenty years ago, when that project was first started, when the tailwater pond was constructed prior to the logs, those slopes adjacent to Hedges Pond Road were, were cut, they were removed, and they were, they were seeded, they were overseeding, they were technically hydroseeded, those sites. But if you go out there today, it's a, it's a pretty healthy stand of white pines and some hooves that are blended in there. The vegetation has grown remarkably well, not unexpected, I'd add, but it is, it, it does look pretty good and has vegetated well. And I think the three-in-one slopes, as required by the bylaw, are easy, easy to achieve, they're moderate to work with, and we're, we're able to do that. And we have, we're not seeking any relief for steeper slopes. There may be some steeper slope inside the cranberry cross-section itself, but I think that that would be something that would be attributable to the cranberry bog design, not necessarily earth removal that's surrounding the perimeter of the site. There will be erosion control on the site, the way, the way it needs to be on the site. I think I might have made a comment with the planning board that we weren't going to be providing some erosion control, but I think I might have been speaking directly to like at a top of a slope where we really had any erosion coming off of our site, or any appreciable amount of rainwater coming onto the site that we need to control and redirect in some instances, or just let it go down to the, to the site, to the cranberry acreage itself. We are planning on trying to capture as much as our, our surface water runoff that runs off the surface of the ground and direct that to the reservoir. That's another reason why we chose a low reservoir, is we wanted to capitalize on the opportunity to recover the surface water runoff that doesn't infiltrate into, into the ground. So, you know, we get about forty-eight inches of rainfall in here. Here, to us, we felt that it would be reasonable to expect about, about two feet of water, twenty-four inches of rainfall to find its way back into our, into our reservoir. So, that's what we, we were expecting there. The Plymouth County Soil Survey indicates the, the site, other than the cranberry bog acreage, has carbon core sands. So, there are carbon core sands in varying slopes, and that's evidenced in the soil survey of Plymouth, of Plymouth County. There are some small areas of pinkly, loamy sand, but any of those areas that are excavated don't provide a quality sand for the cranberry operation, will be used for our construction materials. The vegetation that we're, we're talking about removing is the superficial vegetation that's there now. It's upland forest, it's not wetland, the only wetland that we have nearby the site or on the site is the fringe of the cranberry bogs, that are BDW, and in some instances, the bank that holds back the cranberry bog, or the ditch just outside the cranberry bog that holds back the dipro. Some consider that a bank. DDP does, so we'll go along with jurisdiction on that. The excavation of the material, as I said, would be about, about two million yards, and I have all this on plan, if you, I'll, I'll probably just see if you guys in a moment if that's acceptable to the, to the board. We are talking about the three, three phases that exceed five acres, that is something that we've been looking for, like the specifere fleeing sedentation, erosion control that we will be placing to prevent any off-site erosion or any excess stormwater from finding its way through our site that may cause some erosion in the subsequent sedentation of an off-site area or area that we weren't anticipating. Let's see, we're, we're not doing any of the work within fifty feet of any public-owned property, our, our limit of clearing line is set at fifty feet from the property line in most instances. In some instances, there's not any work proposed with a couple hundred feet of the property line, but where we are working near a property line, we're respecting the fifty-foot, fifty-foot setback to that property line. The vehicular and pedestrian circulation to the site, not expecting much in the line of pedestrian circulation on there, with the exception of the, the employees that are there working. The vehicular access to the site, once the logs are constructed, will be pretty much limited to the, to the foreman or the manager of the, of the cranberry acreage, you know, predominantly truck, the traffic on the side would be a pickup truck. However, during certain times of the year, whether they're applying a fertilizer, whether they're sanding the logs in the wintertime, whether they're changing some irrigations along, along the line, irrigation along the line, I mean, that might involve a little bit more on the line of traffic through the operation of the bog, but not very significant, certainly not as significant as the Plummet County Soil Survey indicates the, the site, other than the cranberry bog acreage, has carbon core sands. So, their carbon core sand is varying slopes and that's evidenced in the soil survey of Plummet, of Plummet County. There are some small areas of pinkly, loamy sand, but any of those areas that are excavated don't provide a quality sand for the cranberry operation will be used for our construction materials. The vegetation that we're, we're talking about removing is the superficial vegetation that's there now. It's upland forest. It's not wetland. The only wetland that we have nearby the site or on the site is the fringe of the cranberry bogs out of B D W. And in some instances, the bank that holds back the cranberry bog or the ditch just outside the cranberry bog that holds back the dipro. Some consider that a bank. D E P does, so we'll go along with jurisdiction on that. The excavation of the material, as I said, would be about, about two million yards. I have all this on plan. If you, I'll probably just see if you guys in a moment if that's acceptable to the, to the board. We are talking about the three, three phases that exceed five acres. That is something that we've been looking for, like the specifery cleaning, sedimentation, erosion control that we will be placing to prevent any off-site erosion or any excess stormwater from finding its way through our site that may cause some erosion in the subsequent sedimentation of an off-site area or area that we weren't anticipating. Let's see, we're, we're not doing any of the work within fifty feet of any public owned property. Our limit of clearing line is set at fifty feet from the property line in most instances. In some instances, there's not any work proposed with a couple hundred feet of the property line, but where we are working near a property line, we're respecting the fifty foot, fifty foot setback to that property line. The vehicular and pedestrian circulation to the site, not expecting much in the line of pedestrian circulation on there with the exception of the, the employees that are there working. The vehicular access to the site, once the bogs are constructed, will be pretty much limited to the, to the foreman or the manager of the, of the cranberry acreage, predominantly truck, the traffic on the side would be a pickup truck. However, during certain times of the year, whether they're applying a fertilizer, whether they're sanding the bogs in the wintertime, whether they're changing some irrigations along, along the line, irrigation along the line, I mean, that might involve a little bit more on the line of traffic through the operation of the bog, but not very significant. Certainly not as significant as the residential subdivision gap to the north that apparently, I don't know, somewhere near where there are two hundred homes there. That to me reflects roughly two thousand vehicle trips a day on residential use. So, our, our use on a day-to-day basis after construction is going to be relatively minor. The construction vehicle trip traffic that we've been talking about is, in the past, the board has branded forty round trips a day for earth removal. And that was, that's kind of a limit. That's roughly, I don't know, I use twenty-five, eight, twenty-five yards per truck just for the ease of math. And, you know, that's about a thousand yards a day. That would be, that'd be coming off the site on, on, with a forty truck load limit. Those, those are throughout the course of the day. If you go to an, an earth removal site, and I'm sure you've all been there, if you get there first thing in the morning, your first, your first ten trucks are either there in about an hour. And then there's roughly, you know, the remainder, the remaining trucks are distributed out over the, over the course of the day. And in many instances, when we have a truck limit of forty or fifty, they're really exhausted their daily movement, truck trips by noon time. At least that's an experience that I have. So, I just bring that up for what it's worth. We're looking at forty vehicle, heavy vehicle trips a day as defined in the bylaw. And we're looking at about fifteen per day of employee trips. We're going to have equipment operators out there. We're going to have truck drivers out there. We're going to have supervision out there. We're going to have foremen out there. Those are the people that will drive a vehicle that's something less than a, less than a dump trailer, let's say. There's no weapons on the site other than the cranberry related weapons. The water supply in the site is our water supply. There is a small portion, and I think it's like the northwest corner of the site, there's a very small portion of a zone two to public water supply well. We've avoided working in that area. We're not anywhere near the zone two. And if we were to reflect back on our original plan or concept plan that we did in two thousand five or two thousand eight, our reservoir was placed closer, closer to that. But as we went through the design with, with, with our personnel, we just reorientated a couple of things so that we didn't conduct an excavation that would be too close to, to a zone two. There are specific rules on excavation within a zone two, and we felt that avoiding those types of things made the most sense in this instance. And if you look, if we were to compare the old plan versus the current plan, we'll see there was a reservoir shown up to that northwest corner. It's not what we intend to do at the present, at the present time. I'll flip through this. Which one do you enjoy?
No, everyone either side of the room.
This plan indicates the majority of the site, the entire portion of the existing conditions in which we're, we're intending to work. So, you can see the three cranberry bogs that we presently have. You can see that we, there's a cul-de-sac that was shown, that's shown up on the, the north end of the property. That cul-de-sac was there when we filed a, a plan with the planning board for the purpose of establishing a zoning freeze. When the, when the earth removal bylaws were intended to be changed, we filed a preliminary plan, I think it was two thousand seventeen, followed that up, built a definitive plan within eight months. That definitive plan was consequently approved by the planning board in two thousand eighteen. It was March of two thousand eighteen. And what that effectively did is that froze the zoning that was in effect at the time we filed the initial plan. So, first plan was filed in seventeen. So, when we did our earth removal permit, that's reported tonight, we're operating, operating under the two thousand sixteen zoning bylaw. So, the things that we prepared today are based on the two thousand sixteen bylaw. This plan indicates what we're looking to, looking to do. It's the overview plan. So, you can see there's a rectangular cranberry bog section to the east. The reservoir is to the southwest. And that last cranberry section, I'll call it more westerly, is going to be expanded upon and built in, in that, in that location. This is the plan that indicates the reservoir. There's been some discussion about that. We show that, I believe the elevation is thirty-nine to the, to the top of it. It's a, it's a, I want to say it's in excess of thirty feet excavation just to get to the water. There's a large slope that goes, that slopes down to the water, but that allows us to flow everything by gravity back into, into that pond. So, we thought that that was an appropriate measure when we first undertook the job. This is just more additional information on that cranberry acreage to the east. You can see that there's a fifty-foot setback distance to the property line required on that easterly side, a little bit to the north, very minor amounts of excavation going to the north until the northeast. We slide over to the southwest of the site. There's a little steeper piece of ground there and you can see that there's more. There's shaking hands. There's maybe all dizzy, but there's, there's the slope that I was referring to there. The hatch line that we have right here, that's the, the limit of the zone two. And you can see that we are not doing anything, there's no activity proposed really close to, close to that area. We're just sloping off the ground to, to match into the existing topography at the top of the slope because our bottom of the slope is already defined by the cranberry, by the cranberry bog itself. So, when we're trying to integrate these together, we want to consider sequential flooding. The new bog to the east, it will be the highest bog. Each one will flow down and I think that the one to the east will flow to the southeast bog and that will turn, return water to the, to the reservoir. And this, this bog right here, there's a flume, there's a flume right there. We're looking to send our drainage from that acreage back into our pond as well. This plan just shows our details where we're talking about having some stabilized outlets where our water will discharge into the pond. We show our cranberry bog section, our cranberry bog section is shown here. A section at the toe of the slope in the roadway with a, with a small swale is shown on the, on the side of the road, on the left side of the road in this case. We, we don't think we need that, but we put it there. In the winter months, I'm sure it would help control some water in the event that some accumulates in that location, but that's what we're seeking to do there. And then immediately to the right, that far right in the corner, that's our stabilization we're going to do with the topsoil and what have you on the site. It'll be spread, I think it's four inches in thickness and hydroseeded with a, a symmetrical seed mixture approved by U S G S, not, not U S G S, but the Soil Conservation Service. This plan that we added, this is the, this is the truck route that we're showing. Our, our acreage that we're proposing right now is over here to the, to the north. We've come off this site and this is the, the existing road that comes from or through the Anderson property, the Dean Anderson property. And with this farm, we're skimping as they hold an easement to travel back and forth across that, across that way for access in and out of this site. There's also at the cul-de-sac at the top of the sheet up here, there's also a driveway there. It's a paved driveway, doesn't look like it's been used by anybody other than the manager of the farm to gain access to the site. We're not intending to use that for anything. It's not going to be used on this site during the development of the project. We're going to use the truck route that we've shown on, on this sheet right here. So, the plan would be to go to, to go up Hedges Pond Road to Route three, I say road, and then, and then get onto Route three, Route three at that location. And I didn't, didn't, I don't recall if there was a restriction on whether we'd go, you know, north or south on Route three, but that's the truck route. That was the truck route that we, we had on the first project. To my knowledge, there was no issues with trucking that I was made aware. Not to say that there weren't any, but I was not made aware of any. We thought it, it worked out fairly, fairly well throughout the duration of the, of the project. And I guess that is... Yeah, I think that's pretty much with, with the physical features of the site. We are proposing, as I said, with the bogs, using all the best management practices, all the, all the, all the things you're supposed to do, all the things growers association would like to see, all the things that the, that the experiment station has proposed as, as our best management practices with the project. So, that's pretty much what we have on this thing right now. It's the overview. I think that perhaps you better turn it over to the board for any questions you may have on things or if there's anything in particular that you'd like me to add, I'd be happy to do that.
Philip, on the tailwater recovery, you proposed that elevation, I thought you said for, for flow, is it?
To...
That low?
Well, we'd be pumping, we'd be pumping the water line on the cranberry bogs. We want gravity flow off into the tailwater pond, and then there'll be a lift pump that would be pumping the water back on, onto the bogs. So, we would be lifting it from that elevation, whatever it might be, third or yourself, maybe a little more, maybe a little less, up to the thirty-five, forty feet.
Okay. I just read that comment from the peer review. I think they say just the opposite.
But that would be, that's their choice. I mean, they're just saying as an alternative, could you look at raising it up, pumping the water into, and flowing it by gravity? And yes, that's an option to evaluate.
Okay. Do you want me to get that or is it good or any of the other stuff?
Uh, well, I mean, some of the stuff I saw you missing out there and I'm sure everybody else is wanting to ask us what. It's okay, but there was no traffic study in there at all. You know, our traffic study in there at all in what we have. The problem I have with using what you did back, you know, back in two thousand five, I think is things have changed up there. And now we have what, right next door, five other businesses, the boats, you know, a variety of businesses. And, you know, one of the things that you can't go past would be that you're only, your traffic and the traffic existing on the road can't equal more than eighty-five percent of the volume of traffic that's around the road during the day. So, I definitely would have to see something on that for sure.
Yeah, and I'm thinking that there should be, at least in let's believe, there's a traffic study that was done down there on Hedges Pond Road. And I would also believe if there was a study done with traffic counts, if those traffic counts are available, we would, we could look at those and see what, what those numbers are that you, that you bring up. But I'm thinking that the, you know...
Well, I'm just saying back in two thousand five, you know, that was a whole different story. Now you've got that whole development that was put in out front with the boats, with the scrolls all the way up, you know, quite a few businesses. So, that adds quite a bit. So, you know, that, Hedges Pond Road is now has a real volume of traffic. I'd like to see that that isn't over the eighty-five percent. Then I, I realize, we have the two thousand eighteen decision of the planning board, it gives you, you, you are now in, how do I say it? That you only have to abide by the old gravel bylaw, not the new one. But in that, you know, we do have like one is you have the two years, you have to come back for every, for extensions, that's one. Two is you do have the five acres open and you're honest with it, I would kind of want to hold it, you're going to go to the old bylaw and hold us to the old bylaw, then I think we should hold you to the old bylaw too. So, I want to see something showing a plan of, you know, the two acres. I realize you have the phases, but I want to see something on the, on some kind of plan on the two years, what you expect to accomplish each one of those. The five years, oh, in the, but I'm just reading my notes here. And of course you have the, the two years that we linked into and the five acre, open acres. And you must remember the issue we had at one point there that we almost revoked the commitment to the last one because there was more than five acres opened up. And at the time when you came back, it was a complaint of a board member that had a building commissioner go out there, building commissioner had you reseeded, so you complied. And because he was the major of the board, you know, you were back into compliance at the time. But again, is, that's one of the things, a couple of things I'd like to see.
I have kind of a similar follow-up between current earth removal regs and old. So, as you've confirmed, you're going, using the twenty sixteen one. But I would welcome the design to conform with our current bylaw. Because when I looked at the drawings, one of the other changes in our new one is that any contra change of more than forty feet needs a little terrace. And your current design has slopes of sixty to seventy feet without a terrace is kind of one thing that was put in the newer one to control erosion, but it's also good practice. And so, I would, I would ask, just like Michael was asking the performance of the old one, but for can this, your proposal be designed to, in a sort of statement of good faith and good practice, designed to our current bylaw and not stick to the old one? So, that's my question.
You want me to reply now or is it...
Yeah, go.
No, I mean, certainly, certainly would, would, would look into that, you know, and just as another point, when you send these things out for peer review or peer review consultant comes up with a comment or what have you, it might not fall squarely within the regulations, but we know we need to do with that comment, we need to comply. And I think that things like that would, would come up in, in this exact situation. We did show, we do show a bench on, on one of these years and we selected that one because of the issue with the pond. I think you're talking about the other slope. I know where you're speaking of, but I guess we can look at that. We don't have a problem looking at that at all. We just filed it under those other regulations, under the two thousand sixteen. So, returning Rose's to me that he would like to come back after getting to a kind of peer review. I was wasting our time.
Well, we're going to get to that if we are Rose.
Well, I mean, it seems like it's a matter of time where we should come up with a new plan, whether it's the new or the old bylaw, or that's the continuity of the natural property.
Well, you spoke, I mean, you spoke a moment ago about complying with the new and the old, and the slopes, and, uh, David talked about forty feet, and we all are aware of the safety issues. The peer reviewer talked about that exact same thing, and safety issues. And there was a depth on that property because of slopes. So, we, as a board, want to make darn sure that things are safe. So, keep that in mind, please do.
Yes, go right ahead, please.
I want to thank you for asking a very appropriate question.
Why are we even here?
I want to ask the chair, but it would be appropriate to have, at this time, Jason weigh in.
I would very much like to have any inspector of directional services, go right ahead, Jason, please.
Thank you. I'm not sure what the question might be, but anything you may have, I can answer.
Well, I, this, would you be able quickly to summarize, uh, that your thoughts on, uh, Mr. Perkins' knowledge of prefer the way?
Uh, I think I'd rather wait. I did make them, I did write the memo, uh, and I think it summarizes some of my position. And I certainly can comment as things come in. But, uh, I think given the, um, the evening and the attendance, that, that maybe, you know, if you have specific questions, I can address those, otherwise I could talk just like everyone brows on this.
Mr. Manning, do you have anything else you would like to add right now? Pretty sure, I think I covered most of it. If you have anything in particular to ask, I'm happy to answer that, and we can wait till a little later, if that's what you mean.
There's one question that I have, um, and it has to do, it's the plan of the report on page four. Um, it talks about, it is likely some activity will occur in the jurisdiction of the conservation commission. Have you talked to them about that?
I know precisely what we have to do conservation-wise, and one of the first things the, the Wetlands Protection Act says, that an applicant prior to filing an notice of intent should apply for or obtain all obtainable permits. So, this is a permit that's obtainable in advance of going to conservation, and that's the, that's the reason why we haven't filed anything with them currently. But we're fully aware of what the, what land in agricultural use means, and what we can do on land in agricultural use, and what the resource areas are, um, on a peer required.
We're heading in a direction that I do believe this is not going to be concluded this evening. So, if it is not concluded this evening, I would like to see some, some kind of paperwork.
Okay.
According to that, just part of the process.
And I think I, I think I base my statement a little bit on the renovation that I did on the, on that central easterly piece, when I consulted with, it was Rob Vaca at the time, who was a conservation agent. You know, we work through the same issues that you're working through, and I don't see any problem, um, working through things conservation have on this budget.
I just want to make sure everything is in the record, everything. Any other questions from the board?
Trying to get really, you're not asked for a motion to continue?
Well, I was just going to make the remark, and I don't get it.
Well, I was just wasting our time.
Right, I wanted to speak to that ten seconds. I did ask in, as of last Wednesday, we had said, if you're a good consultant, I asked staff, I said, guys, I can't imagine that the ZPA is going to have time to adjust whatever they send, nor are we going to have time to address it, so shouldn't we continue? And I was told that the board's preference was not to continue, that's why we didn't ask for continuing, so.
I don't know who told you that, but the board was never-
Yeah, because I agree with what you're saying. I mean, certainly, we acknowledge that a lot to get through here, and we wouldn't expect you to give us the thumbs up with these comments outstanding, so we would like to keep them. Thank you.
Well, personally, I don't think we should just be like that, we named the case. So, we already got the people, uh, the public audience, I mean, if we didn't name the case, I wouldn't let them, because once testimony is given, we can't change. But we've already spread testimony, let's hear from them. And then, if we want to continue, we'll talk, and then we'll give you a list of what we are.
So, if they're going to show up and, and make dramatic changes to the plan, they're going to redo the, they're going to totally redo the, the watch, they're going to reduce it by a minimum of four hundred thousand cubic yards, and they go up and make dramatic changes. Can the audience comment on that, what's going to be proposed? It's going to, this whole thing is going to change. So, if you want to, the, I mean, we're-
Well, but the audience is always coming back. Right now, there's a lot of people, they're not be able to come back.
What's going to happen is, under how it works, is they're going to submit a comment, they can get one crack at the apple. We've done that before on plenty of cases, they get one crack at the apple. So, what I'm seeing, the audience-
Well, that's the most important comment.
I'm just telling you, the audience would be foolish to do any comments to that. They're going to come back, dramatic changes. If you get one crack at the apple, one be heard. If you comment on this plan, this is going to be dramatically changing. Just don't waste your time, is what I'm saying.
I initially thought the same thing, everybody's here now, but we may see, we believe, we may see some significant changes to the comments that people would make, either go to that and get out then. If we continue with, anyone that speaks tonight is not going to get the chance to do that again. No one likes to come back, nor do we.
I'm, I'm looking at peer review, and, and there's just a, a lot that you guys need to come back with. So, I had the same thought as Ed before we spoke. I think this, Peter said, as painful as it might be for him to come back, because there's not enough information right here for me to support this project. And I think, in the spirit of openness and making sure that everybody has a chance to speak, and to speak to what they're actually asking us to do, it makes a lot of sense to do that as inconvenient it is for you as it is for us. So, I agree.
We're there in lives to protect, and we, as I stated in the beginning of this hearing, Mr. Hernandez has a right to petition this board to do what he's asking to do. But your folks, all of you folks, have the right to be heard about this petition. And the way that it works is if you speak tonight, and then we continue this hearing, and you come back, you will not be able to speak again. And there could be some significant changes. And I don't want anybody not to be able to speak, not to be able to share their thoughts, not be able to understand the information that's given completely. I don't want to continue this hearing because it means a ton more work for all of us. But in the spirit of fairness, and in, in making everything open, let the sun shine in, we, I think we have no choice but to change it. So, excuse me, excuse me, please. So, I think, um, the board is pretty, uh, positive about not having enough information this evening to even consider any of this. And the, we got a peer review that has so many issues in it, that even if they presented all of their stuff tonight, it could change dramatically. So, we'd be wasting time. So, I am going to leave public comment open. That means that when this hearing is continued, the public will have a chance to speak. Normally, on, on a night like tonight, we would go through all of the public comment, and then we would close public comment, and nobody from the audience, only the five of us and the petitioner would be able to, to talk it all in open meeting, all in front of you, but it would exclude your ability to participate, and I don't want to do that. Everybody who are taxpayers in this town, and you have the right to talk about this, and we all know this. We, as a board, know the, the emotional thoughts behind this project. We're not deaf, we see what's going on. And all of us have quite a bit of experience with this kind of thing. So, in order to keep the lawsuits to a minimum, in order to keep everybody happy, in order to see all of the information that this board needs, I'm going to entertain Mr. Dean Ambrose's thoughts on a continuance. And I'm going to ask, do you want to present any more stuff this evening? Or do you want to just come back with your complete case?
Yeah, I mean, I think we wanted to give you an overview, but certainly, as you pointed out, there's been quite a few changes based on that letter we received today. So, I don't think there's any point in us belaboring this tonight, Mr. Chairman.
So, how much time do you think it's going to take for you to accumulate all this information that you, to talk about all of the stuff that's in that paper review report you gave?
Well, yeah, well, certainly, Mr. Manning, we have to read, you know, recheck all the plans, basically start from scratch in many respects. So, I'd say at least six weeks, eight is probably more realistic, so we don't ask for another continuance, I don't know how the board feels about that. And I also know that on the second Wednesday of February, that's President's Day, so I don't know to be what the schedule is for, um, that, that February seventeenth, that's school vacation week two, so. So, there's only one meeting in February? So, I mean, is it February third, an option? March third?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that better than rushing, yeah, so I think March third would be good for us, if it's good for you.
Gentlemen, what do you, what do you feel?
Well, I, I just want to make one more comment to the, to the folks here, because it's frustrating for everyone to come here. But, uh, as Michael said, several of us have been here, for many years. And, uh, we've heard over and over again, just a slight change got made, and then some people's back the next month, and said, well, I demand to speak, because I didn't know they would have changed that. And it might even be a change to the bit. And, you know, these meetings could go on for six months if it went that way. So, you know, we, we're in the ordinance, the town council, and we just, we just can't let everybody come back and back and that to discuss these things, so. And it's, I think it's clear from what you're hearing, I'm not going to speak for anyone else, but if the board were to vote on this tonight, they wouldn't want to bring it to a vote, because we didn't just get, you know, some of this information, three pages worth, today. And it's the people that work for us, as, as, and you, as, tell us what they think is good and bad about this project. So, we, we count a lot in, in what, what they advise us on. So, we need time to study it, they need time, because they've already heard a few issues. And I, I think the only fair thing is, even though everyone's inconvenienced, and no one likes to come back out, is that if we do just that, and, uh, if we take a continuance, you know.
Jason, do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
The only thing that I'll say is that, and I might be stating some of the obvious, but we received today a peer review, um, in regard to the project, that the applicant has the right, as you indicated, to respond to, and that these typically do trigger alterations in the plans, and that, uh, if any of these individuals want to, in between the hearing processes, that's based on my office, if I have any of the updated information, I can certainly make it available. Um, right now, all we have is the initial peer review. But again, understanding that there's a lot of interested parties that might be interested between that time and, and, uh, the next hearing. Um, if we have anything available, I'll certainly make it available tonight. But that, again, we will be looking for this peer review we just received, and we responded to from the applicant, with likely revisions or changes to address these issues. And then, that would then internally be debated on, you know, at the next regular hearing, which could in turn, again, trigger another series of alterations again. And so, uh, whether it's approved or denied still remains open, but the ongoing proceedings will happen either way. So, I think that's what we're going to note today, is that the board has the responsibility, whether they like it or not, to institute a hearing, and go through the motions, listen to all the, both sides of it, and, uh, we're just at the beginning. And hopefully, we can get something a little clearer for the people in the audience to know what they're truly meaning, how they're up, because again, this is just the starting. So, and again, I'll be available at our office to answer any questions.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is, uh, we are going to go ahead and, uh, move this meeting. And no, I'm not going to take any comment from the audience right at the moment, if, um, I don't, you answered notes, I don't understand, and I have a procedure that I have packed to follow. So, I would await the end. There will be no more notice in the paper or anything, so the folks that are interested in this and that want to speak about this project, first, as, as the building inspector stated, he will have up-to-date stuff sooner than, than we will, but, and he's glad we can talk to anybody about it. And also, um, there will be no more notice as to when this hearing is going to happen. So, we will set a date tonight, make sure you write it down, because if it won't be in the paper, or won't be in the, in the, a public comment will still be open, and will still be available, safe.
Mr. Chairman, just note, it will be also on the town website with the agenda for the zone for appeal, so it'll be specifically there, so keep in, but if, if, when we continue to, also watch the town website, which will tell you which day.
He's younger than me. I saw that people don't do websites. I still use stamps and mail. Okay, so, I will leave it to you.
Well, the only answer is discussion, if you want to turn it back.
Yes, please.
Okay, so, you know, a few things, well, you know, okay, mainly the traffic stuff. I want to make sure that that traffic, with yours and the traffic on the road doesn't go over eighty-five percent.
Is your mic on?
Sorry about that.
Okay. So, uh, the one thing I want to make sure, we, we address that traffic situation, make sure it doesn't go over eighty-five, that will be impacting the volume of the road, that's one. that's one. Two, roughly about where do you expect to be every two years, some kind of plan showing that, rather than, I know you've got the phases, but I wanna see, because we do have two-year extensions, if you're gonna go by the old model. Also, myself, I'd wanna stick, if we're gonna stick by the old model, let's stick by the five acre, open acres is what I'm gonna want. And then, question for the board is, so, do we wanna kick open old scabs, or do we wanna have you approve the incidental or sub-ordinary two, that money's making on the, the gravel we want compared to the wood, that is, by the rules?
Yes, we will, we will get into that, we will get into that extensively, and what that is, Rob, is we, we want some kind of an analysis to prove that this is necessary, and that the gravel is incidental. Because we start doing some math, we start doing the math, at least I do, and, you know, you gotta grow a, ah, a lot of cranberries to catch up to what you're getting, what the value of the bill coming out of there is, so...
I'm a hundred years old, so we got a lot of time.
Well, just so that everybody understands, because that distinguishes it from a cranberry operation, other than a gravel, you know, otherwise, it's either cranberry or it's gravel, so without that, it's strictly gravel.
So, we're gonna have to have that, Rob. I have a motion to continue this hearing until March the third, and so I believe that we should come here with other people's reasons for... Okay, I have a motion on case forty-two, to continue this hearing until March the third, for the reason of, of lack of information. Coming back, we will want, some of the things we will want as a traffic study, gonna wanna know what's going on at the end of every two years, and the phases, for only five acres to be open. We're gonna want some kind of an analysis on the money thing, and I don't wanna hear that you're going back a hundred years, because a hundred years is not gonna work, all right? We want an up-to-date analysis of what it costs to take that stuff out of there, what the, what the cost to plant the bogs, and what the production of the bogs is gonna do. I'd like to ask Mr. Manning, how many total acres of bogs are we gonna have growing at the end of this year?
Twenty-three, right, Bill?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, I saw.
Okay, twenty-six acres, and you're hoping to get, are all of those bogs gonna be, not worth the, the, or something, they're gonna be the hybrids that are three hundred barrels an acre, all twenty-six acres of them?
Yeah, I think we have six now that are upgraded, upgraded, and we have nine new ones, and we gotta do the rest.
Okay. So, that one's figured in there, because, you know, we wanna see everything. Yes.
So, prior gravel removal operations, we, five acre limitation, how many trips we just analyze, how much acreage has to be taken, how much gravel would have to be taken out, if there's five acres open on the phases, so that one time we have, they'd have to get up eight truckloads to meet that gravel removal operation, and do the math.
Yeah, because they had so much oil there.
Yes, so, soon we're really looking for that. I'm sorry, I'm falling. So if you have five acres allowed at one time, based on the number of acres we can take out of there, how many trips will it take to get all the acres out of there under that time period we're facing? So it's a math equation. Do the math, guys, I don't know if I do that.
It, it does, I think we can get some more clarification on that, but...
Just wanna give the numbers right there. So can you remove that material, that level disturbance in that number of truckloads within that time period?
Yes.
Under your phase of...
Okay, I have a motion by Ed, and a second by Kevin, to continue this hearing until March the third, all in favor. We will be back here March the third, I hope to see all of you folks, and as David said, you can check on the website, I got a computer, but I don't really know how to do that, when I want information, I call that a window.